I'd like to propose, as leader of the council, that councillor Richard Dodd is Chair of the council for the ensuing year, and that councillor Barry Flux is Deputy Business Chair for the ensuing year. Is that seconded? Thank you. Right, are all those in favour of that proposal? Anyone against? Any abstentions? One up, one against? One against? Right, any abstentions?
That's carried, Chair.
Right, that's carried. Right, thank you. Right, not waste any time, because I know a lot of you have been here a long time and want to get home. So, I'm just going to ask that these mics here are switched off. Because I think that's where the interference is coming from. I can't hear you. Right. Now, if I may, glasses? I've got them. But so's the little box of tricks with a microphone. Right, off we go. Welcome to this meeting. You've had the first item. Second item is apologies for absence. Karen? Any more from the floor? Now, the reason we have apologies for absence is so that we know who is here and who isn't here, and it's recorded. And for you members, I am trying to explain to the wider public why we do things, because this, as you know, is being livestreamed. And just bear me those few seconds at each item that I think need explanation. So, let's move. He's in. So, Tommy Wilson?
Tommy Wilson's in hospital. He's in Dumbarton. He's on the streets fighting an election for tomorrow.
You do need to make a statement. If it was Tommy Wilson in hospital, I would say, how bad is he? Shall we send him a card? And like you, I couldn't find a get well soon card. Sorry, a get well card. They're all get well soon cards. He knows what it's like. I cheered him up when he was ill with his knee. To appoint a civic head and a deputy civic head. Now then, this is when we say goodbye to one and welcome a new one. And I know that councillor Dickinson wishes to speak, and maybe one or two others before I invite this process. So councillor Dickinson.
Thank you, Chair. I'm not going to try and do any of the jokes that sadly went badly wrong for you there, but as Chair of the Labour Group...
Right, thank you, as I did.
Councillors have asked me to thank councillor Murray for his outstanding efforts travelling lots of events across the county, in all areas of Northumberland, and treating everybody as fairly as possible. And we think he's done a really good job, and the Labour Group just wanted that recorded.
Anybody else? Before we move on to this part, where we invite, I'll invite nominations for civic head for the ensuing year.
Yes, Chair, I would like to propose councillor Jeff Watson, civic head.
Is that seconded?
Yes.
It's seconded by councillor Sanderson. Any other nominations? No? Councillor Watson, you are duly elected. And can we now go, I invite councillor Murray and the girls to remove and exchange the chains. And councillor Murray may want to say a few words.
Good afternoon, everyone. And I will say my few words in my last few moments as civic head of this council. Fellow members, I would like to express my thanks to you for allowing Tricia and I to meet so many remarkable people and do so many interesting things during this past year. We have travelled from Teeside in the south to the Scottish Borders in the north, and to most places in between. We tried to do all we could to highlight this great county and the wonderful people we represented. I will not bore you with tales of what we have done. Suffice it to say, they have been varied and enjoyable. I would like to give one or two personal thanks. Susan, behind me, without you to regiment my disorganised self, I should have to think how many times I would have been in the wrong place at the wrong time. Thank you. Thank you to Susan, Tracy and Jackie, for all the work you and others have done, mostly behind the scenes, to ensure that everyone we have entertained at County Hall has been given a function to remember. Many thanks to Stephen and Ray, our two drivers, who have got us safely to and from every function, made sure that we were properly introduced, and if they could not find a lift, they made sure that I did not collapse halfway up the stairs. In closing, could I thank everyone who donated so generously to the charity Macmillan Cancer Care, which Tricia and I decided to support? Because we wanted as many people as possible in the whole of the county to benefit. We have been able to hand over a cheque for £15,778.27, which will all be used as needed entirely in Northumberland. We would like to take this opportunity of wishing you, Jeff, and your consort, a year which is as enjoyable as the year we have had. Thank you all.
I'll just say a very few words, no long speeches, because I think over the next year I'll be making lots of long speeches. I just want to say thank you for the few kind words, and congratulations. And here's a little momento of your time. That is bad for being the past chairman. I will try very hard over this next year to do the best I can for this wonderful county of ours. I hope you will support me without any political bias, this is something I would be very pleased about. And I hope you will also support me in doing the charity that I'm doing, which is the Royal British Legion. It seems to be an appropriate time for it, as it's 100 years since the end of the First World War. And I've made special arrangements with the British Legion that any donations that we get will be used solely in Northumbria, which is the area that Anthony's just expressed, from Teeside to Berwick. So none of the money that we raise will go outside of that area. Thank you very much for your confidence, Emmy, and I look forward to serving you over the next year. So now we have nominations for deputy civic head for the ensuing year. Nomination? Seconded? Seconded, councillor Quinn. Any other nominations? Councillor Hutchinson? Where are you? Your turn to swap the chain. Thank you for that. Now, item four, minutes. For members of the public, these are the record of the previous meeting. Now then, we have Wednesday, the 21st of February, and the Monday, the 19th of March, are these a true record? And does anybody have anything to say on these minutes? Councillor Hill?
Yes, thank you. Could I just go back to minute number 72, page 10, minutes? I did ask actually, in December, if I could have the ambulance times, response times, and you said you sent me them then. I asked again last time in February. Could I ask again now, please, in May? Could I have a copy, please, of the ambulance response times? Thank you.
Yes, we do have the ambulance trust coming to all the scrutiny committees now. Not the scrutiny of the local area councils.
Can I still have the ambulance response times, which you promised me back in November, and January, and February? Thank you.
Anybody else on the minutes? Agree the minutes, take them as read? Councillor Hutchinson? Sorry, you're open there, can't you?
Page 21, item 80. Following that, following the meeting, that meeting, there were comments from the leader of the Labour Group. It's not in the minutes, but it's actually on video, and the comments were to do with 416 transport. The charges are probably great, sorry, the charges are probably great for the rich people in the countryside who can afford to cart their kids off to school. I would like a public apology, please, for that. I will not apologise for that.
Right, so that's in the minutes. Right, so we agree and move on? Thank you. Item five, this is disclosure of members' interests. I can disclose I am a member, a governor of the foundation trust of the ambulance trust. And anybody else want to declare this for people at home? This is where members declare where there may be a conflict of interest. Councillor Shaw?
Yes, Chair, could I only declare my interest as a governor of two of the first schools regarding education review in the West.
Well done. Anybody else? Councillor Ruffhead?
Ladies Chair, just a personal interest in item 17-2 Standards Committee, as I bear upon to admire councillors' names in that report.
Councillor Hepall?
Yeah, just to, sorry, Chair, lost my specs. Don't me out. Just to declare, I think I'm an executive, non-executive member of the Northumbria Health Trust.
Councillor Homer?
Thank you, just a personal interest in Act of Northumberland generally, and a personal and prejudicial interest in item 15, and I will withdraw from the meeting. Thank you.
Right, any more declarations of interest? I cannot see any. Right, let's move on. Appointments. This is item six, where the leader appoints his cabinets and their responsibilities, or their portfolios, as we call it. Councillor Jackson?
Right, thank you, Chair. I do believe that full list has been circulated. I'm just proposing exactly the same arrangements that we had last year, no changes. I have a very successful team, and I'm quite happy to keep them. I propose, I recommend those appointments to be accepted.
Thank you. Item seven. Appointment of chairs and vice-chairs and the working groups listed in appendix one to the rear of the agenda, where this is required. Again, there's also item two on this, appointment of committees. I'll hand over to Peter Jackson again. Councillor Jackson?
Again, the list of chairs and vice-chairs and the various committees' appointments has been circulated in detail. As usual, there are many minor changes from different groups, and they're agreed by group leaders during the year, and we're quite happy to take changes in that way. Apart from that, though, there are no major changes. There's only one thing that I should draw the council's attention to, and that is the fact that we're actually scrapping the rights-of-way committee. It's yet another central committee that I don't think is necessary. And what we're doing is devolving those powers to the local area councils, along with the planning powers that we devolved to them earlier. So that's one less central committee, more devolution to local people and locally elected and locally responsible councils to make decisions for their particular areas in Northumberland. So I commend the list to the council.
Thank you. Item eight, and these are the bodies and organisations. Sorry, can we just get an agreement of consent? Can we agree the appointments to the committees and the appointments of the chairs and vice-chairs? Is that agreed? Appointment to outside bodies, item eight.
Sorry, Chair, can I just double-check that the same arrangements will be in place for groups to alternate representatives? Because some of the new committees don't have the printed names in here, and I'd hate those councillors to be excluded, but we have provided the names behind the scenes.
Yes.
Just checking, because some changes just appear.
That may have been your regime, but not, you know...
Well, to be fair, the leader's just announced one there, hasn't he? So...
No, it was in the minutes, it was in the agenda, so... Item eight, this is to outside bodies and organisations which are in the wider north-east. Again, you have this, do we, you have the names of people?
One of the, one of the appointments listed is the Northumberland Coast AOMV, Area Bots and Natural Beauty Partnership. And that states that four, four members want to be portfolio holder for economic development. We're suggesting that that isn't necessary, and that we retain the existing members that have done such a good job in this past year. Councillors Dunn, Moore, Renner Thompson and Ruffhead, i.e. not the portfolio holder for economic development.
Okay. Councillor Pitcairn?
Yes, I'm appreciating the opportunity to ask. I know these are outside bodies and cover a large area, but may I make a plea of this council to have a representative on the governing body of the Sins and Vice Bureau in Northumberland? A service which is going to be needed more than ever in the months and years to come. I know it's not part of this, but I would love you if you please support that.
I recall that they dropped us rather than we dropped them, and we have made the request because on top of my head, we pay them £160,000 a year. I stand to be corrected, but that's off the top of my head. And I think we need some representation to see that our £160,000 is being spent wisely. So we will take that up again.
I have had discussions, and they are minded to agree.
Okay. So can we take these outside bodies? Can we take these outside bodies as read? Can we agree it? Thank you. Over the page. Announcements. I've got two from the leader, councillor Jackson.
Right, thank you, Chair. I have two paper articles today. And the first one is actually, from my point of view, quite a historic agreement that has been engendered with the existing North East Combined Authorities, which actually leads on to the establishment of the new combined authority of Newcastle, Northumberland, and North Tyneside, to give its official name in the parliamentary draft order. I think I must pay tribute to our fellow authorities south at the time. I think at the end of the day, they were actually magnanimous, and the vast majority of them actually voted for us to leave that combined authority so we could form our new one. I really do think it's a new start for those authorities north of the time, and I'm pleased to say that in the north-east, we're all still friends. We're still working together on Transport, all seven authorities, and we're still working together in the same local economic partnership area. So, you know, we still work in partnership with them, but we're actually free now to forge our own future and make a better and a more prosperous and a more skilled workforce, and bring in outside investment from not only this country but all over the world. And there are some really exciting possibilities on the table. Now, it's all going to happen very quickly from now on. So as soon as the parliamentary order is lodged, which should be within the next few weeks, we're actually expecting the new authority to start on the 1st of July, just two months from now, and then we'll actually be able to get on with the hard work on that. So that was that announcement. The next announcement is to do with the Great Northumberland Programme that we're promoting over this summer. We've got the Great Exhibition of the North, which is really going to be hubbed around Tyneside, around Gateshead and Newcastle, which is fine, but it's actually designed to draw in about 3 million people into this area, and it will be the biggest event in the whole of England over this summer period. 1.2 million people are expected to come from outside of our region to visit the north of England. Now, our idea is actually to build on that and have our own programme, so that people who want to extend their stay and want to come up and see how absolutely wonderful and great parts of Northumberland are, will be drawn up into our county. So from the 7th of July to the 1st of September, every single weekend, there will be a cultural event organised in Northumberland for people to go to, local residents as well as people from outside of the area. And it's designed to show what's absolutely great about our county, and it's designed to increase the amount of pride that people in this county have of the deep culture that we have. We had an official launch on Friday in the abbey at Hexham, and it was extremely well-received by partners. And we're going to partner up with all sorts of culturally-based community organisations right across the county, and businesses offering visitors, sort of that of their tourist offer. And it's, the amount of enthusiasm that we found at that event for mother organisations, for us actually taking the lead and working in partnership with them over this summer, was quite, was quite something to behold. So I hope it's designed, the programme is designed to reach all parts of the county and be available and interesting to all age ranges in the county. So over the summer, wherever you live in Northumberland, you will not be very far away from one of our great Northumberland events. So please engage, please come along. But there is a brochure out now, and the website is live now. So if you want to know the details in your area, go on to greatnorthumberland.com, and you will find out the full details. Thank you.
I have another announcement, which is, I don't know if you're aware, but our national park in the Thumberland won the country file's outstanding or best national park in the country. So that, I think, is another feather in our cap. So well done to them. Also, on correspondence, just on the agenda which are at the start, I'm going to tell you now that items 18 and 19 have been withdrawn from this agenda. That's the pink papers at the back. Something's changed, and we, the report has to be redone, and we'll be back in front of you at some future point. Now then, on to correspondence, item 10. Sorry, Grant, again, I failed to bring in a farming magazine for you. Well, a minute.
I noticed when I flew over your house a couple of weeks ago that you didn't have any gunews on your land, so...
What's a canoe?
While I was in Uganda, I picked up the Ugandan Farmer's Weekly for you. And it tells you how to improve your canoe breeding stock, and I think we should send it forward via the hands here to make sure that you can actually do some real livestock breeding, like real livestock farmers in Uganda do. Thanks very much. Could you pass that forward, Bernard? Thank you.
I'm sure that we will get a full report of your activity in Uganda, and what you were doing. Thank you. So it's getting into a game. Right. Now we move on to questions. We have three questions, so I think it's councillor Hill to start.
Thank you, Chair. Question to councillor Glen Sanderson. Since May the 1st, 2017, how many fixed notice penalties have been issued by this authority for dog fowling? And what is the total amount received through fines during this period? How do these figures compare to the previous 12 months from May 1st, 2016? Could you also provide a complete written breakdown of fines issued for offences within each electoral division since May 1st, 2016?
Thank you very much for your, for your question. You will get a full written answer after this meeting. But by way of a little bit of background, there are nine million dogs in the UK, and one-third of households in the north-east has a dog, which makes us almost the highest dog-owning part of the UK. So we have a lot of dogs in Northumberland. Most are well looked after, and their owners are thoroughly responsible. However, some are not, and most of you will have at least part of your time spent in dealing with dog fowling inquiries. As a council, we take this very seriously, but we've taken a carrot-and-stick approach. Safari's encouraging better and more responsible dog ownership. This administration introduced in July last year the Green Dog Walkers Club. And we've just signed up our 1,000th member. But where dog fowling does take place, we take that, as I said, very seriously. And we've actually increased our enforcement team over the last year. We've handed out 87 fixed penalty notices, resulting in fines of £5,240. These, the hotspots are Seaton Slouse, Cramlington, no, sorry, Ashington, Blyth and Cammert. The total fines for last year are around £900 less than the year before. And the number of penalty notices are down from 98 to 97. However, I think that is largely because of the approach that we are now taking in this council to deal with dog fowling. Additionally, I'm pleased to say that over the last year, we've received 25, sorry, 25% less complaints about dog fowling, and I think that's a very encouraging sign. I'm sure that all members agree that dog fowling is something that we want to get rid of altogether. And we will do everything we can in our powers, both by encouragement and by enforcement. But I am optimistic that the way we're approaching this is working, and I thank all our frontline officers very much for the work that they do.
Supplementary?
Thank you for the, for the answer to that. Could I just, obviously, when I get the breakdown and do some number crunching, but 87 fines in a year doesn't sound an awful lot. Just two quick questions. Has there been any fines issued in Berwick? Upon tweed? And do you think we could do more in regards enforcement?
The figure for Berwick is, depending which year you're looking at, is either three or six, which compared to around sort of 2025 for the areas that I've mentioned as being the hotspots. We would do more if we had sometimes the help of the public. We need to know where the animals are being kept, we need to know where they're being taken, and when, and what time. But we do act very quickly on all the reports that we get, and we make sure that we do everything we can to be as responsive as we can. And that's why I think those figures are improving, and that's why I think what we've done as an administration is actually beginning to work.
Okay. Second question is councillor Hill to councillor Indian.
Thank you, Chair, to councillor... Thank you, Chair, to councillor Wayne Daly. In light of the recent damning Ofsted report regarding Barrick Academy, which gave the lowest grading in every category, placed a school into special measures, and found that pupils have been put at risk through serious disciplinary and safeguarding failings, what steps is this authority now taking?
Thank you, and thank you for the question. As you probably were, we share your concerns about Barrick Academy. However, the law does make it impossible for us to intervene in the affairs of an academy unless invited by the chair of the trustees, David Cairns, and/or the regional schools commissioner. This does not mean that we are powerless. So what I want to do is actually answer your question in a very direct term about what we have actually done in terms of support. So far, we facilitated a meeting for all of the school heads and the chairs of governors in the Barrick area to discuss wider issues of educational standards. We're also going to attend a meeting in the next couple of weeks, which will be facilitated by the diocese and the local MP, in order to attempt to come up with an agreed action plan across the whole school network. The director of education has actually written to the chair of trustees on three occasions to express all concerns, and I have actually spoken to the chair of trustees as well before the inspection took place. And I will phone him again and attempt to meet him and the new head teacher in order to discuss our concerns and agree a way forward. I've also written both to the RSC and the Education Skills Funding Agency to express our concerns about the academy, and I will continue to bring this information to their attention, as indeed I did on the fifth of February, when I was in London with the National Head of Academies and the Department for Education. We have investigated several safeguarding complaints where we do have power at the academy, and I found that the academy had applied all the correct policies and procedures in relation to the individual complaints which were made. And we will continue to investigate safeguarding matters on a case by case basis, but I'm sure you will appreciate that the results of those are actually confidential. We have received the Ofsted report, which indicates several issues around safeguarding, but overall that it is satisfactory. And we continue to monitor the outcomes of the Ofsted monitoring visits, the first of which should take place at the end of this term. And on a personal level, can I assure you that we are doing everything within our statutory powers to actually improve education and life chances in the Barrick area? And yesterday, I spoke to the Member of Parliament, because quite frankly, I'm not accepted, able to accept failure in Barrick, as I'm sure that other members are not either. And we will, and I hope, to be able to make some further announcements following some further discussions I'll be having with the regional schools commissioner.
Supplementary?
Thank you for that answer. I don't think it's possible to overstate the seriousness of the safeguarding issues. In the last twenty-four hours, I've heard of two more serious instances. Could I just ask if it would be possible to arrange a meeting with yourself, the RSC, and my two colleagues in Barrick to discuss these issues further?
I'm in fact more than happy to do that, and I will make sure that that happens.
And RSC is not the...
Sorry, I will correct, RSC, Regional Schools Commissioner, not the Royal Shakespeare Company, who, despite the fact of the drama in Barrick, it's not them.
Hi, question three, this is from councillor Davy. However, we do have a problem that this started off as a motion, and then, and I know you were probably travelling back from Uganda, Grant. So it's down as eight questions in one, so under the rules, I'm going to allow the first two. And the cabinet member will give you an overall, and your supplementaries on the first two.
Well, as I wasn't here, we didn't convert this into a motion, which is just such a pity, because a motion would have been nice on this subject. Since the announcement from the Secretary of State, Sajid Javid, that the council is now free from the fear of intervention or its removal of the core strategy from government inspection, and that NCC have promised to complete a new local planning record team using the Costly Planning Advisory Service, on behalf of communities countywide, we need to know how the current proposals, which include a reduction in housing numbers, which will see a decline in economic growth by the administration, will deliver growth in the economy of the county and the new jobs and increase, and new jobs and increase the working age population. And the second question is, is deliver on the government's priorities for increased housing growth.
Councillor Ridley.
Thank you, Grant, for that question. Thank you. I will endeavour to cover some of the points in your multitudinous question. But generally, of course, the administration welcomes the announcement of the then Secretary of State that he does not intend to take further action in respect of intervention. We have acted upon his expectations that the council should accelerate its plan, preparation programme by up to three months, and provide greater clarity in the local development scheme timeline as to key milestones and when they will be achieved. The revised local development scheme has been published on the council's website, and the timeline has been amended as follows. It was published on the council's website this week, and the publication of the draft local plan, which is Regulation nineteen, will be January nineteen. The submission of the local plan, Regulation twenty-two, will be May nineteen. And the examination hearings would be in September two thousand and nineteen. An adoption of the local plan is scheduled for March twenty twenty, which is actually four months ahead of what was proposed before. The administration is very grateful for the free advice that has been received from the Planning Advisory Service. It's not the costly advisory service that you suggested in the question, and is utilising this advice in moving forward with the preparation of the local plan. The local plan will make provision for supporting a growing and thriving Northumberland over the planned period within the context of the council's aspirations, national planning policy, and the ambitions of the North of Tyne Combined Authority. Housing numbers in the emerging local plan will be sufficient to meet the needs of our communities and will reflect an ambitious growth led target. The local plan is nearing completion with key decisions to be made in the coming months prior to the public consultation on the draft plan in July two thousand and eighteen. The production of the plan is occurring at pace, and therefore, many specific provisions are yet to be agreed by members, as officers continue to develop the local plan, which has not yet been approved by cabinet and is still emerging. When the draft local plan is published in July for consultation, it will answer in full the eight separate questions that you've asked.
I'll give you two supplementaries, Grant.
Because I'll come back next month with the other two you didn't answer. My follow up question is, Northumberland has, in comparison within its, within its population, a large waiting list for social housing. Is the council going to invest in new social housing? And if so, how many new social homes do you expect it to develop over the remaining lifetime of your administration? Thank you.
Thank you, Grant. I haven't got a specific number for you at the moment, Grant, I would have to research that one for you. But assisting both housing associations and the council to develop much needed social housing, I presume that's the bit of your question you were alluding to. Well, the local plan will be a plan for all Northumberland's residents. The council will directly seek to optimise provision of social housing as part of any North of Tyne housing deal and through the housing revenue account. I think you know that we've already shifted some money out of the housing revenue account for to do housing and to develop schemes. We will also continue to work with housing associations to provide affordable housing through section one of six planning obligation agreements.
Are you done?
Yes.
Thank you. Right, item twelve, this is to receive the minutes of the cabinet meetings held on Tuesdays in eighth, thirteenth, twentieth of February, thirteenth, nineteenth of March, and tenth of April. Councillor Jackson wants to move them as on block.
Yeah, I'm just happy to propose all of those minutes from pages forty-five to eighty-four.
Councillor Davy? And then councillor Dale.
One of the reasons, and on page ninety-three, so it's page fifty-seven, but your item is on page ninety-three as well. So just so you're aware, Chair, that I'm not trying to cheat on you here. The reason why I wouldn't apologise for my, on my outburst at the last council, was the fact that, yes, you are doing some protection on the bus passes for post sixteen for people on two types of benefits within your papers here today. But in your later papers and in the actual report to cabinet, you are not protecting those people who are on the edge of affordability. This is about people who live in deprived conditions and who are strivers. So, you know, the people have to pay fifty pound out of what may be very low wages, particularly as most, a lot of the children will be travelling from agricultural working jobs and because of the mileage, etc.
Grant, I'm told you have to ask questions rather than make statements on the...
Well, the question is, how are you going to protect the people who are just below benefit level? Because this is a very, very expensive scheme, fifty pound to see whether you actually qualify, and you're going to use that fifty pound to actually create jobs. It says in your two sets of papers. Thank you, Chair.
Anybody?
Yeah. You can join in. Yeah, I mean, how do you answer that? At the moment, the current scheme is that each child is paying six hundred pounds a year. And that was a scheme that was brought in by the previous Labour administration. And many of us in this chamber, not just from my party, but many of us in this chamber, thought that that was so discriminatory against poor people in difficult to reach and often rural areas, but not always rural areas, that six hundred pounds per child for young people to get to higher education, post sixteen education. We thought that that was very much seen as taxing the very people that you're talking about. So your solution to the fifty pound charge over two years, so it's twenty-five pounds a year, where we're actually charging for administration charge for a pass, your solution to that would be to script the free post sixteen transport fee scheme and bring back in a six hundred pound a year teenage tax, just extraordinary. And most people call that slightly mad.
Councillor? Hang on.
Can I also make the point that if you don't, if you don't qualify, you get the fifty pounds back as well?
Yes. Grant, come back? Can you repeat for him, because he was...
Just say, yes, if you don't qualify, so you go through the application process, pay the fifty pounds fee. If you don't qualify, you get the fifty pounds back.
Microphone?
The reason for the six hundred pound charge from the Labour Group was nothing to do with affordability. It was the fact that the system was being abused. It was a wide open system where people were travelling as far south as Durham and as far north as Edinburgh on trains and public transport. The changeover to the six hundred pound scheme didn't stop young people getting to the, to the local schools, and it was about expanding the number of sixth form people who travelled to their local school. It wasn't about getting back to a situation where you can travel anywhere. Now, the fifty pound scheme has some limits on its travel, but it still will be the nearest school for your course, and your course could be chosen anywhere. The wording is within your papers, it's a very, very poor scheme, and the families who, you know, who don't want their children to go to local school, want to go to better schools, who I was describing in the first place last time, will be able to pay that fifty pound. It's quite different. The two schemes are incomparable. Thank you, Chair.
Wayne, did you want to come?
Yeah. This obviously is at scrutiny tomorrow, but I'd just draw people's attention. I'm sitting here, and I'm actually almost thinking I'm in a parallel universe. I've got a Labour Group leader standing up criticizing us for imposing an administration charge of twenty-five pounds a year instead of their scheme of six hundred pounds. It was the biggest teenage tax that this country's ever seen. You were taxing young people out of education, your group. And if I can just remind you, there was a motion which took place in twenty fourteen, and the Labour Group won that motion to keep the teenage tax, thirty-four votes to thirty. Every single Conservative member voted against it. And just remember, for those people who do, that that was the meeting that the leader of the Labour Group told us cost eighty thousand pounds to organise. So I'm not going to take any lectures about absolutely removing a six hundred pound teenage tax from the young people of Northumberland. I want them to have ambition, I want them to go to the best schools, and the fact that you still will not apologise by calling people in the countryside rich is quite shocking. I genuinely think you have an opportunity here in public to apologise to those people who live in rural areas, and if you are aware of rural poverty, you should apologise. So Chair, I think it's a brilliant idea, and I look forward tomorrow to free post sixteen transport for all.
It is about you, so go on, let's have your reply. What is the point of order?
Point of order is clarification. The two schemes are completely different. One scheme was to help the high schools in the countryside retain their older young people. Hold on a minute, there's a point of order, so don't start jumping up. The second part of it was that the actual six hundred pound scheme was to try to force people to go to their local school. This new scheme will be exactly the same as the old scheme. The fifty pound charge is an element of it. You will have massive costs to this scheme, which will be a burden on the council. And in the main, those, the people who will benefit from that are people who are wealthier, because the poorer people won't be able to pay some of this fifty pound, the same as they couldn't pay the six hundred pound, so they went to their local school. Seriously, it was not a teenage tax, it was to help schools in this county, which you've just U-turned on, councillor Daley. You've U-turned on the services to close schools in the west of the county to do something else.
Come on, order.
As a parent, whose children are caught up in the middle of this, I do agree with councillor Davy on one thing, that the two schemes are entirely different. One's six hundred pounds a year and the other's twenty-five pounds a year.
Councillor Dale. Then councillor Pickle.
Just for clarity, on page fifty-three, please, and actually, it's fifty-two and fifty-three? It's just about the medium term financial plan. Do you think in the future, we've changed the medium term financial plan, which was from actually two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty, with the two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty actually being the deficit of thirty million? The new financial, medium financial plan actually goes to nineteen twenty, to two thousand and twenty-two, which actually includes a further thirty million. And that is the thirty, thirty million that is added on to the financial, the medium term financial plan. So I just think we need a comparison, because the external auditors were very clear about the deficit. And the deficit to two thousand and twenty was, as it was, thirty million. And that was to be found by this council from May last year. So the fact that you've actually put an actual deficit of sixty-five million is actually not quite correct. The thirty billion, extra thirty-five million is actually to do with two thousand and twenty to twenty-two. I don't want a response now, I can come back to you with like for like, I've got all the documents at home.
I think councillor Dale should have actually been listening during the last governor's last budget debate. And it seems that you haven't sort of picked up on the realities of the financial situation that we inherited a year ago. The reality is, when we opened the books and looked into the reality of what this council was facing over the next few years, and looked into the reality of... and looked into the reality of the hundreds of millions of pounds of debt that had been built up over the last four years and the fact that we actually have to start paying that back by law that wasn't allowed for in the previous budget. The reality of something we're considering today, two point six five million pounds just to keep the leisure centres open for this year only because of the financial mismanagement of the previous council. The reality that Acta, that Arch, the development company, has never, ever paid a dividend back to this council and that the loans on that this council have been given to the development company never had a capital repayment element in them. If you run your personal finances like that, then I'm quite sure you wouldn't be here today. You wouldn't be able to afford to keep a house over your head. We're trying to fix the roof and we're going to start fixing the roof on this building for the end of this month. But we've actually got to fix the finances of this council and we've got four years to do it. Now, when we looked into the reality of the situation a year ago, the debt that we inherited and the financial pressures added up to us having to make savings at a council of sixty-five million pounds a year over the next three years. Now, if you've read your budget papers properly, you would have understood that. But I'm afraid that you don't like to obviously understand things that you don't want to hear. Well, go back, go back to your budget papers and read them in detail and you'll find out where that sixty-five million comes from.
I have councillor Pittcock.
I'm sorry, I actually feel that that statement, I think I would like to take up with the external auditor. Because certainly as far as the dividend is concerned, the actually Arch didn't give a dividend to, they gave a million pounds to Acta Northumberland. But they actually gave the business, obviously you don't understand the business case on the loan. And I just think it's too complicated, obviously here, to discuss it. And I'm quite happy to come and have a discussion with you. I'm quite happy to discuss it in public. I'm quite happy to bring all my documentation, which is all paper based.
I think it's important that we, as councillors, all do understand the business case, and I say that in inverted commas, for the loans from the council to Arch. We've lent, I think it's approximately three hundred million pounds to Arch. And at the moment, Arch isn't paying enough interest to cover the cost of interest to the council and to cover the cost of capital provision on that. So there's a deficit which was reported in a report from the section five-one officer, I think back in February, that showed around six hundred thousand pounds. And also on top of that, what that didn't take into account was the fact that in the next five years, two hundred and sixty-nine million pounds of council debt needs to be refinanced. The direction of travel for interest rates is upwards at the moment. So when we refinance that debt, some of which has gone to Arch, the cost of that debt to the council will be higher than it currently is. So that loss of five hundred thousand pounds a year will actually increase. And we will be saddling future generations of this county with debt from decisions made in the last four years. And it's very, very clear, it's black and white and it can't be disputed.
Councillor Pittcock.
Thank you Chair. I've noticed that this council has become a toxic, sneering, patronising council.
Yeah, I've just been asked, which part of the minutes are you referring to?
Just about saying, page fifty-three of the Cabinet Minutes.
Yes councillor Pittcock, can you use the microphone please? Because we can't hear you. We might not like what you have to say, but we need to...
Thank you. What empirical evidence is there that the post-sixteen transport charge has acted as a disincentive to stay in education and estray on families? I'm looking for empirical evidence.
Councillor Pittcock? You can join in. I think there just seems to be a lack of understanding from the Labour group about the deeply harmful effect that that six hundred pound teenage tax has had on families right across the county. The actual place to discuss the detail of it is in the scrutiny committee and I'm quite sure that will happen. But the evidence that I've got from speaking to residents up and down Northumberland is that they're absolutely relieved to be taken, for this teenage tax to be taken away from them. If you've got a family of two or three kids going up through the school system and you have to pay two or three times the six hundred pounds in after-tax income, it's just a huge imposition on any family in the country, particularly those families in poorer areas. Now, one thing that a lot of Labour councils don't understand is that the poorest area in Northumberland is actually in the north of the county. In the Berwick area, they have the lowest average incomes of anywhere in the county, if not anywhere in the country. And we've got to, we've got to make sure, we've got to make sure...
Yes, come on, please.
We've got to make sure that young children in that community and all communities across Northumberland have got equal access to post-sixteen education because we want them to have a successful and fulfilled life and improve their life chances. And we're providing, as a county, and a county council, we're providing them free transport just with one administration charge of twenty-five pounds a year. That's got to be a lot better than six hundred pounds a year for every teenager.
Councillor Davy, did you want to come?
Yeah, just very briefly. We had a consultation on the removal of post-sixteen charges. I'm not aware that any of these questions or any of these observations were tabled by the Labour group in that public consultation. Perhaps you didn't want to put in black and white, that you wanted to keep a six hundred pound charge and you weren't in favour of free post-sixteen transport. It's a pity you didn't take part in the consultation.
Right, I've got councillor Jeff Reardon.
Thanks Chair, this is dead easy compared to what the idea was over. Page sixty-three, minute sixty-nine. Item A, County Hall External Works. The last sentence says, staff will be decanted to Blythe Civic Centre in Wandspick Square. As I drove here today, I drove past the Blythe Civic Centre and it's got a great big huge for sale sign outside of it. So I was just wondering what arrangements are going to be made if the council no longer owns that building?
I think the plan is also to move people around within this building. So that, I mean, I think the officers that are dealing with it are quite confident that we've got enough space in all of our buildings to accommodate everybody whilst the refurbishment work is carried out. It won't be carried out entirely. You know, the whole building won't be refurbished in one go, it'll be done in bits. So there will be a little bit of shuffling around. But I think, you know, at the end of it, we'll end up with a facility that's fit for the future.
Councillor Dickinson.
What you forgot about was that Chair, I just wanted to ask a clarification from the leader because I know there's a lot of spinning of numbers and people can change things to make things seem the way they wish and whatever else. But I just wanted to...
I think you've been reading your own Facebook.
I wanted clarification. And the clarification is, the leader said not long ago that he inherited a strong and stable organisation that gave him time to review everything. Now he's saying that that wasn't the case. Was he lying then or is he lying now?
I think the people who are lying were actually the previous Labour administration. Because I've tried to explain it several times. For those who don't want to hear, they don't hear the truth, do they? When we came in, I made that statement in the first week that I was here. Because I actually believed that this council did have stable finances at the time. And then section after section, officer after officer in this council came to me as leader and said, we just can't deliver these budgets. We've been given budgets that we can't deliver. So they were actually just ignoring the time. I looked into the situation with the council's finance officer in much more detail, looking forensically at each part of the council's budget and realised to my horror that you'd left us with a sixty-five million pound deficit, a black hole to fill. So I'm afraid you have to take real responsibility as a Labour group for the absolute mess that you've left this county in. Thank you.
Right, I have no further speakers, so we take... Councillor Campbell.
If I can remember, it was the Labour government who actually gave young people thirty pounds a week. It was, I think it was called the AMA loans. And if they still had that money, they wouldn't need the taxpayers to pay for their transport to get back and forward to school because it probably would be now about fifty pounds a week.
Yeah, I've been advised that this is not on the minutes.
But sorry, what I would just like to say is, who was the remove that thirty pounds a week from those young people?
Right, okay. Who indicates you want to speak on this?
Yeah, sorry, it was just to pick up on the same minute that councillor Reed picked up on about the refurbishment work. And it's interesting that councillor Dickinson mentions various figures and inaccuracies and so on. I think at the last council meeting, we talked about some inaccurate figures that were floating around. And I made an appeal for us to try and have political debates based on accurate information. Because that's the only way we'll be able to manage this county properly. On the minute refers to the County Hall External Works and in that cabinet meeting, we had a general discussion around the wider costs of the County Hall refurbishment and the fact that we're not moving to Ashington. I note, looking around on Facebook, that there are various figures being put out by various Labour Facebook pages. We've seen seventeen million, twenty-six million, twenty-nine million, thirty million, thirty-eight million. And most recently, on the Ashington Labour Party Facebook page with quotes by councillors Grimshaw and Lang, we've seen an astonishing fifty-seven million pounds.
You've just stopped one of our members speaking, because it was on the agenda.
It's on about the refurbishment. This is about the refurbishment of County Hall. And the misleading figures that are being put out.
So we talked about getting accuracy on the information that's out there that we're making decisions on and having political debates about. And I'm just very keen that the debate about the County Hall refurbishment and the lack of a County Hall move is made on accurate information. It's not helpful when people put out that it's going to cost fifty-seven million to stay in the building. It's just clearly not true.
Councillor Grimshaw. Were you named? No, you weren't.
Yes, I was. Thank you very much. And I'd just like to point out, councillor, that the Northumberland Conservative page repeatedly in all material promoted eighty million pounds, which was a lie. And that was proved to be a lie in this chamber by officers of the council. It was a whole scheme you were referring to. You told the public that it was eighty million pounds and that was another lie.
It was advertised, I believe, I believe it was advertised by your council that it was an eighty million scheme advertised in the European Journal.
That was for the entire Portland park. You put on your material that that was for County Hall on its own, a palace for council suburbs. It was a lie, you misled the public.
Do you want to comment?
I've just, I've never met any sucre that the eighty million pounds refers to the title project.
Right, all right, councillor Grimshaw.
Thank you Chair. Well, I would just like the leader to be upfront and honest to say exactly how much refurbishment of this building is going to cost. And will it be disabled friendly? Because at this present moment in time, it isn't. And I also object the fact that I've put in statements out because indeed that was the quote, that was the figures that we had. But would like to have a final total, perhaps, or even a running commentary, how much it's costing after each little office that you intend to rent out costs to refurbish. Thank you Chair.
Right, but no more speakers, so I intend to move on. We'll take the whole block. Can we receive the minutes of the cabinet meeting held on those listed? Agreed? Item thirteen, to receive.
We actually have to approve some minutes of capital expenditure. So we've got minute sixty-nine, minute seventy-five and minute eighty-two. And I'll just briefly outline the capital projects that they refer to. The first one is actually the commencement of the external works to County Hall. And I remind councillors that actually the work to refurbish this building starts at the end of this very month. We're going to fix the walls, we're going to fix the roof, we're going to fix the whole of the external infrastructure of this building, so it's fit for purpose for at least another thirty-five years. We're going to install a new cafe and shop in Bednall through the Coastal Communities Fund, a project for one point one five million pounds. We're going to approve the flood and coastal erosion programme, which includes projects in Hawkesbury and the Seehouses Pier Coast Protection Scheme. We're going to provide substantial funding for a new clubhouse for Ellington Junior Football Club. We're going to approve the country parks investment programme, which will have major benefits to large parts of our county and improve our tourist offer. We're going to approve a major extension to Craster Car Park. We're going to approve the Allen Valley Railway cycleway, which should improve the tourist offer for that area. We are actually going to approve a Poto Action Fund grant of a further four hundred and twenty thousand pounds to try to start to tackle the problems that we've been facing due to the long and hard winter that we've just endured. And we're going to approve some new fire and rescue support vehicles so that we can upgrade the fleet of vehicles we have within this council. So I propose that this council approves all of those minutes. Thank you.
Seconded? Seconded. Can we approve them? Item thirteen, to receive and consider minutes of the following committees. Item one, Corporate Services, Economic Growth. Is this David Bourne? Pages eighty-five to eighty-eight.
Thank you Chair, I'd just like to move the minutes of the Corporate Services and Economic Growth Overview and Scrutiny Committee, pages eighty-five to eighty-eight. Thank you.
Any questions? No? Agreed. Item two, Family and Children's Services Overview and Scrutiny, councillor Renner Thompson.
Yes Chair, I'd like to move the following minutes of the Family and Children's Services Scrutiny Committee, pages eighty-nine to a hundred.
Any questions on those? I cannot see any. Item three, Communities in Place Overview and Scrutiny, councillor Reed.
Thanks Chair, move the minutes of the Communities in Place Overview and Scrutiny Committee on the twentieth of March, twenty eighteen.
Can't see anybody wanting to speak. Item four, councillor Watson, on Health and Wellbeing Overview and Scrutiny.
Just like to move the minutes of the overview and scrutiny meeting of the Health and Wellbeing Board, which was held on the twentieth of March, two thousand and eighteen.
Nobody's indicating, thank you for that. Health and Wellbeing Board, this is presented by me, pages one-one-nine to one-thirty. Can we take those? Agreed. Audit Committee, councillor Hill.
Thank you Chair, move the minutes of the audit meeting held on the twenty-eighth of March. In doing so, just draw members' attention to a couple of quick points. The annual governance statement, this is an audit committee that is not going to be nodding through long detailed reports without due diligence and scrutiny. So that report has actually been deferred for further comment from members and I'd welcome any comments from any other members outside the audit committee to that draft annual governance statement. And also just note, there was an urgent business item, which was the report into Arch, concerns about abuse of hospitality. Couching my language very carefully, but you'd have all read that in the media. All I'll say is, there was the MIPIM conference in Cannes and given the bar bills that we looked at, it must have been hot out there because delegates certainly were very thirsty. There was some information that came out, such as bottles of wine costing sixty pounds. Further bar receipts have been found that some bottles of wine were actually a hundred pounds. Further bar receipts have been found that some bottles of wine were actually 100 pounds. Just like to thank members of that committee and officers, because it was a busy meeting, and there was TV cameras coming in halfway through, so thank all members who attended that meeting for the support.
Councillor Townsend.
Thank you, Chair. Just going to the bottom of page 136, resolution number five, that the committee came to, that the monitoring officer be requested to consider any evidence regarding hospitality accepted by elected members. I just wonder if the Chair could update us on the progress of that report to the monitoring officer.
Thank you, councillor Townsend. Yes, there was an extra recommendation, which was unanimously approved by the cross, all cross-party members of the committee to refer the issue to the monitoring officer, given potential breaches of the code of conduct and certainly various aspects of the Nolan principles. That report and complaint has now been formally made to the monitoring officer.
Okay, councillor Spender.
Thank you, Chair. On page 134, bullet point number three, around Arch being seen as part of Northumberland Council, and his question around previous audit procedures, just to request further explanation on what was meant by audit being used as a consultancy, please.
Councillor Hill.
Thank you. Yes, the, and this is going to be subject to further reports, the issue with the audit arrangements previously was, first of all, the Audit Committee were given reports to view. In other words, the former chief executive of NCC were basically telling the Audit Committee what to audit, which I don't think anyone would consider as very robust arrangements. And then obviously, serious flaws in the membership of who Arch's internal audit team was.
Councillor Grimshaw. Then I've got councillor Pidcock, councillor Oliver, then councillor Dale.
Thank you, Chair. I have two questions asked, if you don't mind. The first question is, did the board of Arch agree the content of the report sent to the Audit Committee? The second question, did the board of Arch agree that the report should be made available to the public?
I don't know if you can answer that, can I?
I just would like a yes or no, please, if that's not too much to ask.
I believe so. The report actually came to us after it was considered by Arch, unless councillor Oliver or we might have anything else to add on that.
Do you want to add on that? We'll take them as we go.
The board considered the document, referred it to audit for consideration. That's correct.
Is that a yes or no to both of the questions? Just a simple yes or no will suffice?
I believe the first question, just to be clear, just to make sure I understood, was, did the board of Arch...
Did the board of Arch agree the content of the report sent to the Audit Committee?
We noted the content and referred it to the Audit Committee.
So you agreed. I just want a yes or a no, please, just a yes or a no?
Noted, noted.
So that's a yes, thank you. Did the board of Arch agree that the report should be made available to the public? Then again, just a yes or no, please.
I don't think that the position was formed either way. I think that that was a decision for the council and for the, and for audit.
That's my belief, too.
It is a possibility, so we could find out for clarification, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Can't see why not. Right, councillor Pidcock. Microphone, please.
I'd like to draw your attention to page 135. Thank you. 135, the Chair then invited the press and members of the public to ask questions. Now, as somebody who has been ignominiously and humiliatingly thrown out of the Audit Committee, I want to know how on such a delicate subject, the public and the press were invited at the Audit Committee to make their comments. I was thrown out as an elected member, they were allowed to speak.
You weren't thrown out at this meeting? Were you thrown out at this meeting? If I remember rightly, the meeting you're referring to when you were thrown out was in December.
I am speaking about the meeting, an audit meeting, where an elected member was thrown out. Where an elected member was thrown out, where an elected member who wasn't a member of the cabinet, namely yourself, was allowed in. So is this double standards or discrimination on the grounds of political affiliation, or both?
Confidential items. You refer to as confidential items, the December meeting, I recall, you were there, I was there, councillor Seymour was there, and I did ask the question, because I am a member of the cabinet but a non-voting member of the cabinet, and the answer came back was the same as had previously happened, that councillor Dickinson, the business chair, would have been allowed to stay in the meeting. Councillor Seymour was also asked to leave, and it was on pink paper, which you know is not for publication. This obviously wasn't. So... Okay, I have councillor Dale.
Thank you. I've just got two items, which, we're talking about honesty, integrity and openness. The board of directors of Arch, I believe you all sign up to the 206 agreement, Companies' House Agreement. And I brought it with me, because I think this is relevant, and I'm feeling very uneasy about, I'm quite happy about the audit, and whatever the judgements are, that is fine, that is up to you to decide. However, it's actually bringing this to the public domain in the fairness of the Companies' Act. And I have an issue. Can I just go back, because I think it's quite right that we go back then? Probably you don't know, but two years ago, councillor Jackson was being investigated by, under an FOI?
Councillor Dale, I've been advised that this is not on the minutes about councillor Jackson.
No, I'm sorry, I'm talking about the board of directors, and this is already, I'm not talking about it, but I can send you the FOI, I can let the FOI available, that because of the position of a director in his manifesto decrying Arch, investigation was going into, because of the Companies' Act 2006 being in breach.
Right, cut the mic. I've been told that you are, I've been, had legal advice in my ear, and this is not for you to talk about in this session here.
So can I make a formal complaint then to audit about the 2006 Act and the board of directors?
You need to make that, but I think we need you to stop speaking on that, otherwise we will get into legal trouble. I've been told that, so I'm asking for the next microphone to go to Nick Oliver. Can I reiterate from the Chair what advice I've been given? If I do not follow that advice, I'll be in trouble, the council will be in trouble. The microphone's been cut for a reason. I've been given legal advice, councillor Pidcock. Councillor Oliver.
I'm not responding.
Councillor Dale, you said you had two points. What was the other point?
Thank you. Is it turned on? Thank you. Just to go back to the annual general statement, government statement, which I think is imperative that it is correct, and I'm glad that a member has mentioned about having actual facts that we can discuss. And one of the things is, you probably remember in Deloitte did an issue about planning in 2013, and this was seen as high risk. I believe that the withdrawal of the core strategy is high risk to this council, and should be, I'm sorry, it's in the annual...